I can find this regularly scheduled and newly posted meeting of the Harlingen City Commission for Order. And you'll join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, in your word, you have given us a vision of that holy city to which the nations of the world bring their glory. Behold and visit, we pray, the cities of the earth. Renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life. Send us honest and able leaders. Enable us to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression. That peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order. And that men and women from different cultures and with differing talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity through Jesus Christ or Lord. Amen. Please join me in the bunch of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now I would like to welcome all of you to our meeting tonight. Glad that you're here. Appreciate your participation and your interest. Item one is a public announcement of events, or any events that would need to be announced.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. We have two city-sponsored events between now and the next commission meeting. The first being the third of four Blues on the Hill concert series. The headliner this week is W.C. Clark. Again, it's at McKelvey Park Saturday evening, starting at 7:00. We have vendors, beer, all sorts of good stuff. And this is generally the largest of the concert series, being that's right before summer ends. We also, if you remember, we're gonna have a fourth concert, a member that we're still working on. We've tentatively agreed to move that one to Long C Hill Fair Park as well, due to the anticipated crowd and with the Cowboys being associated with it. So again, this is this Saturday night. We also have... And then Saturday night, September the first, which is Labor Day weekend, we'll have our first family movie night. And again, this is at Long C Hill Fair Park as well. Activity start at 7:00. It's free and open to the public. The movie, which is The Lorax, just came out on DVD, so very popular. And you'll see at the bottom, we have a fireworks show that will begin about 10:15. We do have a commercial that's running, starting today, for this event. I'd like to show you. It's only 30 seconds.
The City of Harlingen Parks and Recreation Department and Time Warner Cable invite you to movie night at the park. Pack your picnic basket, chairs, blankets, and come out for family fun at Fair Park, starting at 7:00 P.M. And join us Saturday, September 1st, for a special screening of Dr. Seuss's The Lorax. Also come meet Ralito from Pinya High Institute. And kids, don't forget your cameras. Enjoy movie night at the park on the big screen at Mission is Free, sponsored by Time Warner Cable.
So again, that's Labor Day weekend, September the first. Movie at 8:30, fireworks at 10:15.
Okay. Two great events. Is there a thought? Do you know if there's gonna be a White Wings game or anything going on?
Yes, the last White Wings game of the regular season is that Saturday night. We're already in contact with them, letting them know of our plans. And they've actually decided to move their game time up to 6:35, to have the lights off and everything by the time 10:15 rolls around. Yes.
Okay, very good. Any other announcements of public events? All right, then we'll go on to item two, board recognition. And I have two folks that we'd like to recognize. It's Rudy Martinez, first. Is Rudy here? Rudy Martinez?
He's coming.
There he is. Rudy? Rudy, come on up. Martinez, we want to recognize you for agreeing to serve on our zoning board adjustments. So if you wanna face the camera and... You can find your picture on the city's website next week.
There you go.
We wanna thank you for your agreement to serve our community. We appreciate it. We can't run our city without all the great volunteers that we have, so we appreciate your dedication.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Board Kizley. Kizley, come on up. Come on up. We want to congratulate you and thank you for agreeing to serve on the center of the classroom.
My pleasure.
Thank you so much. We're good. We're a hero for all of us. We appreciate your service.
Well, thanks so much.
All right. Thank you. Item three is the approval of the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to regular meeting minutes July 18, 2012, the special joint meeting in July 25, 2012, or the special meeting in July 5, 2012? Any additions or corrections?
Yes, I was not at the first meeting, the July meeting. So I will abstain on that part of the approval of the minutes.
Okay. July 18, well, then let's take it. All right. Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes of July 18?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Then we'll take over July 25 meetings, special joint meeting and special meeting of July 25. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is items 4A through G on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda on final reading?
Thank the motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed, like signed. Motion carries. Item five, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to abandon a 30-foot wide alley. Being a 0.281 acre tract of land situated between block seven, Olive Porter subdivision and lots 1 through 4, a Royal Industrial subdivision located between the 1100 block of South Commerce Street and the 100 block of East Taft Avenue, Africa, to William Ronald King.
Union Pacific Commissioners, the applicant is requesting the abandonment of a 30-foot alley that's located on the 1100 block of South Commerce Avenue and 1000 block of East Taft Avenue. This is the subject alley. I mean, it's a 30-foot wide alley that was dedicated on the plant. You can see it's on Commerce and Taft Avenue. The applicant is proposing to fence the alley with additional properties that he owns south of the alley, which are these properties here and the two properties he owns connected with properties along Commerce Street. Subject alley is not in use. Request was reviewed by the city engineering. Has no objections to the abandonment. The appropriate utility companies also reviewed their request and had no objections to the abandonment, subject to dedicating a 20-foot easement along the existing alley. This abandonment went through the bidding process in accordance with the Texas Local Government Code. The applicant, Mr. English, was a sole bidder at $10,000. Staff has recommended approval of the abandonment, subject to the applicant purchasing the alley at the approved bid, plus with the addition of dedicating the required easement. Take any questions? And the applicant is also present for questions.
Yes, I walked the land yesterday. A question then. Was that Union Pacific railroad property?
It was shown on the plan as a dedicated alley by the plant. There was a railroad spur.
The railroad's still there.
Right, still there.
So I have a question. Has the railroad legally abandoned the property?
We don't have any record that they did.
Well, because railroad law, like, supersedes all law in the country, even the Supreme Court. Railroad law is railroad law.
Right.
And if we don't have a document that they have legally abandoned that, and we're just assuming they have abandoned it, then we can't sell something we don't own.
Well, since it was right-of-way, the city still owns it. They obtained a license to encroach it. You know, the city still owned the alley, but...
But there's still railroad track there.
Right.
And I would need to know who owns that railroad track.
According to our records that we showed, it was, since it was a dedicated alley by the plant of the Aurora Industrial Park, it would generally be the city, but it's a dedicated public alley.
The train was running on that track up to a few years ago when Valley Morning Star was printing their paper here. When they transferred the printing of the paper to McAllen, the train stopped coming. So the question once again is, who owns that railroad track? We can't make assumptions.
Yeah, we couldn't find any record that, other than the city owns a track, that the railroad made on the track. There was no record to be found at this point.
But a railroad would not run a track over the city right-of-way.
Right.
Was there a title report on it, or?
No, maybe just through the references and plaque records.
I would recommend contacting Union Pacific to see how they legally abandoned it.
I believe the applicant did contact Union Pacific. He's there for any additional questions.
Okay. Well, what's the answer?
Bring him up. I went to the local office today out here.
Local office of?
Of Union Pacific. I talked to the guy that was in charge out there, because normally, when you have this kind of a problem, you have to go to their place and do the easements. The guy out there told me, he said, that the railroad only owes 30 foot from the middle of the track on. He said, since they no longer use it and people have already put a fence across it, the city has already paved over Taft Street where the train cannot run. And on the south side or the east side of it, you got mesquite trees that are 20 feet high on it.
Right, I understand.
And they told me at Union Pacific that they no longer own the track or anything else. And I tried to call Omaha, but the number he gave me wasn't the correct number. And I don't... He told me, he said, there's no problem with it. People have already put fences over it and everything else.
Right, right. I saw that. You're not sure an acre has fenced in the railroad.
Right.
Whether legally or not, I don't know.
Right, since I have... I've kept the property up for the last 15 years, since I've owned that lot. And then I bought the other lot from Buses, from Laurel Park. And we wanted to go ahead and fence the whole area, but I hate to fence back there without that 30 feet. And if it's not gonna be sold to me, I'm not gonna take care of it anymore. I'm gonna make the city come out and clean it in two weeks.
This ordinance doesn't... This action isn't to sell the property, simply to abandon the alley. The alley. 30-foot wide alley.
Our portion. Yeah, it's the alley there.
Our portion, right, the city's portion.
Yeah. When is the sale? Does the sale already occur? Did you already?
They had a bid on it. I think I was the only bidder.
Okay, if... So has it been given you a deed?
Oh, no, they haven't sold it to me. I think that has to be approved by y'all.
No, Dean, if I remember correctly here, the property was appraised for about $24,000, $25,000, and you put in a bid for $10,000.
Correct. That's what I... You know, it's not worth any more than that to me. But like I said, if they're not gonna sell it to me and I have to put up my fence, that's fine. But the city is gonna come. Every time the wheat starts running up on it, I'll, you know, I'll make sure that they come out.
How did wheat live this?
It went through the bidding process in accordance with the local government code. It was advertised twice in the newspaper and the bids were open, I believe, on July the 26th. He was a sole bidder at $10,000.
But we're not talking about the bid. We're still talking about the abandonment of the right-of-way right now. I think we can, as a city, we can abandon the right-of-way. We're not using it. And hopefully the railroad will then be able to work out the details of the bid.
Yeah, I could just give you a little bit more information. Mr. English, who is the applicant who was just here, he also had an appraisal as well, at a lesser amount of $16,000. And then the city added an appraisal at $24,000. He was the sole bidder. As engineering said, that piece of property, there's absolutely no use to the city and we definitely don't need it. But if you do abandon the alley tonight and take action to accept his bid, you could put a condition in there to take care of Commissioner Miss Mar's concern that we actually do confirm with the railroad and get something in writing from them or do a title search to prove that they don't have any ownership or interest in it. I suspect it's just a spur. But I mean, what difference... I mean, what difference does it make if we're gonna... This is... We don't want this property. We don't wanna maintain this property.
Exactly.
It's surplus property. We're gonna abandon it. If we abandon the alley, that's one action. And then selling him whatever our interest is, and we're not making any representations to him what our interest is, but we'll convey him a deed and he'll take it subject to whatever other interest may be.
In other words, it sounds like the bidding process was done properly. When it didn't sell for the appraised value, went to bids, he bid on it. That's what he offered. So he's buying whatever interest we have in the property. So we're just gonna abandon our interest and he's gonna pay us for whatever that is.
It seems like it's a potential liability to us to have the property. Might as well get rid of it.
I agree. But my question is, is can we sell something that maybe we don't know?
We can sell whatever our interest is in. And it may be, you know, maybe crowded, it may be colorable, it may be challenged, but if it shows, if the title report out there shows that we have some kind of interest in it, we can sell whatever that interest is.
Then I'll...
I'm saying that, but I'm asking.
No, and I agree. I mean, whatever interest we have in the property, whatever that may be, obviously we must have some interest in it because it shows that we had some kind of a right-of-way or alley easement or some kind of alley. So we... All we're doing is giving him our interest in the property.
Right.
Now, there may still be a problem with the railroad, but that's something he's gonna have to deal with, the railroad.
I wanted to mention one thing. When I bought the property from Mr. Busey, who y'all probably know, Mr. Busey, the railroad track is not on this map right here. But the railroad track actually goes... There it is. It goes over a portion of my property right here, which is not in y'all's alley. And on the deed that I got from Mr. Busey, it has that easement on it. And it was made in 1947 to Texas and Mexico Railway, which I guess now is part of Union Pacific. But, I mean, to me, since I already own part of the land that's under the same railroad track and I'm gonna fence it myself, I don't know what difference it would make about that if y'all had...
And you're willing to deal with you...
Right, I'll deal with them.
You're willing to deal with the railroad, whatever their interest is.
If they think that they got some... All they have is an easement.
Right.
Because I think the land belongs to the city. I mean, I would think deeds records would show that. So I think it's y'all's decision.
There's a public hearing.
Okay, we need to go to a public hearing. Open the public hearing passengers. Anyone like to speak for or against this item? All right?
I would like to ask you something. Has anybody done a title search? Because we have a lot of properties here that have clouds. They have been given a special deed. And you're talking about litigation here. There will be litigation.
Yes, public hearing is one... Anyone else who would like to speak for or against this item? Hearing now on close of public hearing and go to item D, which is to consider and take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading for the above-mentioned abandonment of a 30-foot alleyway.
An ordinance abandoning a 30-foot wide alley described as a 0.281 acre tract of land situated between block seven, Olive Porter subdivision and lots 1 through 4, Royal Industrial subdivision located between the 1100 block of South Commerce Street and the 1,000 block of East Taft Avenue, subject to one, the applicant purchasing the alley at the approved bid, and two, dedicating a 20-foot utility easement along the alley.
Okay. Is there a motion without the ordinance?
Okay.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a Part B on discussion. Other landowners have fenced and seized that alleyway. If Joel, or Ken, or Dan, or whoever's in charge, we need to go and see if we sold our property previously or people have encroached upon city regular, city property, and then deal with it properly.
Right, and they have some adverse position already?
Yeah, I, you know, I don't know squatters rights or whatever, but people fenced in that land. I'm done with Part B.
I mean, does that affect?
It doesn't affect this decision.
And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like signed. The motion carries. Item six is a public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow adult business liquor store and general retail district located at 621 South 20th and South 77 Sunshine Strip, Beverly and Sherwood ML Sunshine Strip subdivision, lot 1, block 1, applicant Jamie Becker F., on behalf of Speck's Family Partners.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow an adult business, which in this case would be a liquor store out of an existing 7,000 square foot building. This is the existing building, which is the Felmons Building, or Felmons Business, located on South 77 Sunshine Strip. This business was sold to Speck's founding partnerships. There could be no changes to the operation, no change to the name of the business. Still, they remain Felmons Business, but since the previous permit was issued to, or specific use permit was issued to Felmons, the new applicant has to apply for their own specific use permit under their name. That's the only change that was being made to this ordinance. This request was reviewed by the appropriate city departments. None of the departments had any objections to the request. Public hearing was conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission. There was a concern pertaining to the proposed liquor store. Property owners were also notified, excuse me, within a 200-foot radius. There's no concerns. Staff has recommended approval, subject to the applicant maintaining the required parking spaces, obtaining the proper state permits, and compliance with the laws administered by the planning, fire, building inspections requirements. Take any questions? And the applicant is present for questions.
I have just one quick question. I don't know if I'm reading it wrong, but on the summary, on the executive summary, as well as, I think, the minutes of the P&amp;Z, it states that the hours of operation will be Monday through Friday from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m.? Is that supposed to be 9:00 p.m.?
Should be 9:00 p.m.
Okay, just making sure I read that right. That has no effect on any of the other language that we're gonna approve?
No, it doesn't.
Okay. Under that language, public hearing, all of the public hearings, one on street four, or against the side? Go ahead.
The other one that I had was against it. This one, I'm against it. Let me tell you why. Number one was the announcement in English and Spanish, because there's a lot of residential police right there, okay? Number two, how far is the school from there? How far is the church from there? And how many people have a lot of children? It's gonna affect them. It is gonna affect them. I mean, we wanna bring more business into the city, but an adult business can't real.
Is there anyone who might speak for or against? Anyone else who might speak for or against this SUP? Hearing now on close of public hearing and go to item D, which is to consider and take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading for the above-mentioned specific use permit. Read the caption.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance, ordinance number 07-27, of the City of Harlingen to issue a specific use permit to Jaime Barnett and Jamie Barnett on behalf of Speck's Family Partners to allow adult business liquor store and general retail district located at 621 South 77 Sunshine Strip during illegal description of lot 1, block 1, ML Sunshine Strip subdivision, subject to one, maintaining the required off-street parking spaces; two, obtaining, maintaining the proper permits for the state; and three, complying with the permits administered by the planning, building inspections, and fire prevention departments, dividing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Several for approval? Your second.
Yeah, I'll say.
Any discussion?
Yes, so all we're doing is changing a liquor store to a liquor store.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Change the ownership.
Yeah, just changing the ownership.
And just for the record, this one means the distance would fall to 300 feet from a church, school, or hospital. So there's no... It's compliance with the ordinance.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed, like signed. The motion carries. Item seven, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone from non-designated in District 2 residential single-family, R1 District 4, 1.05 acres, plus or minus acres out of Lot 7, D S and F, survey 41, located at 1309 South Pomport Drive, applicant Hugo Santana Jr.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property, which is this property here, from a non-designated building district to residential single-family to allow a 24-by-24 accessory building, or metal building, for the storage of vehicles in the rear of this property. Request, because he's located on Pomport Drive, south of Lincoln Avenue. See, most of the areas, there's some single-family residential use, some mixed use with residential and commercial use, and some vacant land and agriculture use. The request is consistent with a low-density use listed on the future land use map. Public hearing was conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission. There was no concerns addressed at the meeting. Staff has recommended approval, and P&amp;Z's also recommend approval. I'll take any questions, and the applicant is also present for questions.
Does the building exist, or will it be built?
It will be built. And in order to get a building permit, he needs the property to be zoned, which is what he's doing, re-zoned.
Okay. Good. Item A is public hearing. Open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak for or against this item?
I would like to ask you a question. When you say building, what are... They said metal building. What is it gonna be used for? Is it just storage?
It's storage and accessory building for the storage of his vehicles that he has.
Say, one else would like to speak for or against this ordinance? Hearing now on close of public hearing, item D, which is to consider and take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading for the above-mentioned rezone request. Ask the city party to read the caption, please.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance, ordinance number 07-27, of the City of Harlingen, re-zoning from non-designated in District 2 residential single-family, R1 District 4, 1.058, plus or minus acres out of Lot 7, D S and F, survey 41, located at 1309 South Pomport Drive, vehicle publication, ordaining other matters related to foregoing. So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed, like signed. The motion carries. Item A, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit, SUP to allow adult business and general retail, GR, district located at 6779 West Expressway 3, Beverly and Sherwood, 3.597 acres out of South 10 acres of South 1 half of Lot 13, Street Place subdivision, survey 138.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow an adult business, which in this case would be for a sweepstakes gaming room out of the existing... The existing Harlingen Hotel and Events, and it's located off of Stewart Place, Expressway 3, Vista Stewart Place Road, which is this hotel here. This is a floor plan which shows the proposed sweepstakes gaming would be in the area which wants to house the restaurant. There is a bar which was granted a specific use permit approximately a year ago to a different applicant. The request does comply with the required parking requirements. There's a total of 190 parking spaces. The applicant is proposing, in the area which was once the restaurant area, 30 machines. Request was reviewed by the appropriate city departments. The building department had the concern of maintaining, retaining the proper permits. The health department and the fire prevention department had no objections to the request, subject to complying with the appropriate city codes. The police department also reviewed the request and submitted a report. They had no objections to the proposed request, subject to complying with the proper state statutes. And at the same time, the public hearing was conducted by the planning zoning commission. Meeting as well. Effective property owners within a 200-foot radius were notified, which is approximately about 10 property owners. The staff did not receive any objections to the request. Staff has recommended approval, subject to the applicant maintaining the required parking spaces, complying with the proper state statutes, providing the required security, providing the required lighting, and complying with the requirements administered by the planning, fire, building, police, and health departments. Take any questions? And the applicant is also present for any questions.
What about security?
Security is part of the ordinance, which he would have to provide security during the peak hours of operation.
Okay, let me ask you this. Are we... Are they wanting to be able to provide security like we have the units that we came up with last year?
Correct.
Certified?
Right, have to be a licensed security guard.
But how long are they planning on using that? I mean, you know, peak hours, but...
Generally, the peak hours, which has been... Has been forced for the previous establishments, for bars, for example, have usually been from 9:00 to 2:00 p.m., 9:00 to 2:00 a.m., excuse me, from Thursday through Saturday.
So how long is this gonna be?
According to the applicant, and he's here to clarify that, he indicated 24 hours.
I can... My concern is, is what is after?
Right.
You know, I say that if we're going to approve this, then if it's going to be Thursday, Friday, or Saturday, as far as, you know, the hours that are being run most, that we should make a recommendation to the SUP to have, make sure that they have security guards there twenty-four hours to be social base.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll give that up and have any problem with it.
Okay, good question. Is it, is it currently open and running?
No.
Did I read that here? Is Danny Warner here?
The Cadillac Bar is open.
Yeah. Can we ask Danny Warner to speak, please? I'm going through a hundred and ninety-nine pages trying to find the report.
I did not personally go out there. One of my parents' specters went out to visualize what was actually happening out there. And at the time, they did find that there were thirty machines that were there. We did not find that it was in operation at this time, though.
Okay, so the machines were packed, plugged in, or?
They were.
Correct.
No, they were set up for operation.
Okay.
You said they were off, or they were on?
He did not tell me, but he said that they were already set out and set up.
Are, are, the question I have, are these eight liners? Slot machines?
Not that I'm aware of at this time. It's more like a computer-based, sit-down, and you're on the computer playing video games, as I understand. Again, I was not there.
What's the difference between these machines and eight liners?
The, there's some minor differences in definitions. For example, some business owners are claiming that they're sweepstakes, others are being defined as eight liners. So there is differences in how the laws are interpreted.
It's just like everyone else's sweepstakes, you know, all the Ember devices. They do the same thing, peel off.
There's a main, there's a main, there's a main.
This is a big, this is a big one.
I'll talk about, why don't we go ahead and call the public hearing first?
I just have one question first, Adam. Do we have any other, would say SUP?
No, not at this point.
This will be the first one.
So be the first one.
Okay, item A is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak for or against this item? Yes?
In the state of Texas, it's against the law to have slot machines, okay? And if this is going to be one that gives you money as opposed to toilet paper, as opposed to rice or beans, it's against the law. So if you approve this, we're going to start getting all these people to come over here instead of slot machines, we're going to, they call, they call themselves game rooms, okay? But there's a difference between a slot machine and a game room that pays you money. The difference is, what is it? They both pay money, it's illegal.
If you state your name and your address, please.
I'm the applicant, my name is Ragutu. And I'd like to mention a few points, but to start with, this is much different than eight liners. Eight liners is illegal, and this is a legal business approved by the state of Texas, and the controller of state of Texas has cleared it. And everything is done through the computer, and in the eight liners, they feed them cash. But here, everything is routed, and then it is channelized through the central system, and a part of it goes to the, I mean, to be precise, five percent goes to the charity. So this is a charity sweepstakes, and this is legal, and we place, I mean, I would be paying taxes on this business, and my employees would be paying taxes, and whereas eight liners, they don't pay, I mean, they don't pay anything.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
I noticed on your literature, it says authorized by TABC. Do you get some kind of permit from them?
Yeah, TABC, I mean, the, the whole sweepstakes centrally, they have got a permission from TABC that we can serve beverages like beer and wine. There's a letter to that effect.
But when it says authorized by TABC, is that just in reference to whatever alcoholic beverages you're selling, or?
No, we're not selling anything, we're just giving, giving them away.
Okay, but, I mean, is there, is there some kind of permit process through them?
Yes.
For these machines?
Yes. I have, I have.
So they have regulations that they, that you follow?
Right.
Through their permitting process?
Yes, there are regulations, and it's permitted, and everything is.
Because these, these aren't coin drop?
No, this, we don't need any cash. It's, whatever the cash they want to play, they want to donate, it will be recorded. The name and their phone number, everything is recorded, and if you want to go back.
You've established a nonprofit organization for the governing?
Yes.
Of this, of this enterprise?
Yes.
And that's, that's by law, by state law, you have to have?
Yes, sir.
To be able to obtain the permit from TABC to operate a sweepstakes, you have to have that nonprofit structure.
Yes, we do have to have.
And then y'all have a designated, designated charities that, that are beneficiaries of this money?
Yeah, we have Skyward Bound Ranch, and I am contributing to that, and providers of the software, donate zone, they are providing a part of it from their side. I have some literature, if you may, then I can give you.
But, so, but a follow-up question to that. I mean, I know, I've read some literature on some questions and concerns that have arisen in other communities that have faced the same decisions that you're asking us to make.
Look, there are about nine hundred locations all over the United States.
Well, I haven't even had this question yet. My question is, when you say, I, I think you all establish yourself as a nonprofit organization?
Yes.
And it's a pretty broad term of that. My question is, how, what percentage of your gross revenue actually goes to a bona fide nonprofit, or?
Charity.
Charity. Five percent, to be precise.
I'm sorry?
Five percent.
Five percent?
Yes.
And where does the other ninety-five percent go of the gross revenue?
So it goes towards rents, administrative expenses.
And profit.
A part of it, yes. If, if there is any.
One of the concerns that I think a lot of communities have, and that I would have, because I, I can understand some of the letter of the law allows certain businesses to be established, but I think one of the responsibilities we have, I have, I feel as a commissioner, is the community standard. And one of my concerns is the type of business, and, and the concerns that I think that have been echoed in other communities circle or center around that, that issue, that I think can happen, where people look for loopholes, much like what we found in some of the smoke shots. And other types of business that they'll try to find a loophole in the legal language of the statute, and manipulate that language to provide a, a venue or an activity that otherwise would be found illegal. That is my, my sincere concern here. I, I do want businesses here in our city, but I think we have to be responsible to find out what type of business we want to have in our city. I'm just sort of wasting my, my personal opinion here, but that's still, I have questions about that, because when you stated that your business is, is a nonprofit organization, but if you were to bring in five hundred thousand dollars in a year, in reality, only five percent of that is going to a true charity. The rest of it is in the pocket.
No, not the rest of it. I have to pay the labor, I have to pay ORECs, I have to pay the rents, and anybody working there.
No, I understand that. You, you have your own business plan and so forth, I'm just sort of trying to work that out of my mind and try to make sense of what would be the right thing to do here.
Is Skyward Bound Ranch a five oh one C three corporation? Does it have a, do you have a certificate from the Internal Revenue Service?
Yeah, I do have, sir.
Have we seen it?
I can, I mean, right now, I don't.
We haven't seen, we haven't seen a lot of things in this case, Mayor. I don't think well has seen it. I have not seen any of these documents. Five oh one C three, who his partners are, anything about his corporation, anything about who he's partnering with, there's a good, a number of issues.
If I can say one thing, his charity doesn't have to be the Skyward Ranch thing, but I told him he ought to focus something like on the Harlingen Boys and Girls Club, a local charity that, that's legit, and that is local, so he can be helping a local charity here.
Who, who are you, and what relationship do you have with him?
I'm Rick Rodriguez, and I'm, I'm helping him.
Helping him how?
Just different things. So anyways, as a local charity, I think.
In what capacity?
Pardon?
In what capacity? I, I know, but people here may not know.
He, he, he went into research on the legality of it, went through the, the legal process, and found out it is a legitimate thing to do, there's nothing wrong, it's legally sanctioned, it's sanctioned by the state, so it's, it's regulated, it's heavily regulated, it's, you know, there's nothing illegal about it.
Yeah, so doing some research on my own, you know, I, I didn't do any really deep research. I looked at the nine nineties of this Sky Ranch, raises questions.
It's not going to be the Sky Ranch, huh?
Well, the application says so. I look at how these, including using the HEST computers, there have been busts in South Carolina. I understand that's different state, different law for gambling. I understand that there have been sweepstakes rooms in Texas that have been busted for gambling, because I don't gamble, I don't know this stuff. Apparently, it slips one way or another. That's a concern of mine. I, I have no reason to doubt this man, okay? But it has happened. Question, another question I have is, okay, so, and, and I wish you would bring back the Indian Restaurant, it was fabulous.
Not enough, not enough customers.
Yeah, well, I was there. So, so the question becomes then, the, the bar is still open, correct?
Yes, of course.
So that people can walk from the separate?
Separate entrances.
The separate?
Separate doors.
Right. And, and people can walk across, go get a drink or two, and come back and sweepstake?
If they want.
That's right, if they want.
I mean, we are strict.
I don't know TA, was it TABC, was that the?
TABC, yes.
Okay. Is there a law, rule, law against that, serving alcohol? And, and sweepstakes?
No, we don't serve alcohol, we serve beverage.
Okay, so the Cadillac Bar doesn't serve any?
They serve alcohol, yes.
Okay. So the question I have, and I don't know the T, TABC rules, I guess I have it for our attorney also, having a bar that's serving alcohol six or eight feet away, and calling it a separate organization, these are two separate organizations?
No, we're not calling it, it's a different ownership or two.
Yes, yeah, yeah, they're two separate ownerships. Is eight feet away, is that legal, is that kosher, is that clean?
Yeah, I mean, I'm ready to comply, I mean, that is, I don't think, you know, I can open the door other side, and it's like fifty feet.
Well, it's still easy for someone to go over and toss down a couple of drinks.
Well, they can go to the next door, drink and come back.
Yeah, so, so my question is, is, does the TABC address that? I don't know the answer.
If I remember correctly, TABC, as long as you don't leave the premises, you buy alcoholic beverage at a bar, as long as you don't leave the premises, they go outside with it. Okay? Can't do that.
No, TABC, there is the.
This is a, this is a legal question.
Yeah, I think the point, the point is, you know, is it, is it enough that even though it's on the same roof, is it enough, whether it be separate ownership, is it enough, how much separation should there be? Because it's a, I think it's a pretty good question. And my, my concern, another concern that I have, is, is this is a high visibility intersection with our community, and it's a very important, you know, corridor to our community. We've already got some of these, you know, these types of businesses, you know, populating the expressway front, and, you know, is there, are there some things that we can do to regulate the location of the, I think we talked about this once before.
We did.
I think that, you know, my suggestion would be we table this, put it on for executive session items, and we can explore these items, and we'll talk about it, and then we can put it back on the, on the, for next meeting.
And Mayor, I would request, they keep saying it's sanctioned by the state, we're going to have to see those documents where they're saying the state, state is sanctioning the operation of this, of this operation. Let me ask one.
Yes, ask another.
Okay, other question, so HEST, the maker of these machines, is highly litigious, and they sued the state of San Antonio, or the city of San Antonio?
Mr. Ragutu.
Which, we have just been, let the commissioner back to his point, and then we'll allow you to, to distribute the material.
So, so San Antonio passed some sort of law, and not being a lawyer, I can't read into all the, exactly what it means, but it's, from what I can understand, San Antonio restricted these businesses, taxed these businesses, and HEST and the charity sued in federal court, San Antonio, and it was thrown out once. HEST and the charity went back and sued again under a little different hook, and that was tossed out also. If you're his attorney, could you comment on that, please?
I haven't seen the, I haven't seen that case loss.
Okay, it's, it's federal court. And then, a question then, why does, why do these sweepstakes rooms all across the state and all across the country, why do they all funnel their money to the Sky Ranch?
No, this is.
It's just curious that people from all over the country would send money to one charity in Fort Worth that's actually headquartered in El Paso, and has three, from what I could see, three operations. And I've read the nine nineties, the IRS nine nineties, and as I said, it raises questions about this charity. And I'm not implying anything, I'm just asking questions, because I.
Well, first of all, we can't speak to what other people are thinking or doing, so they don't.
Correct, I know.
So we ask this to speculate, we can't speculate.
Yeah.
And number two, again, this, he's got an option to go to a local charity, which I advise him to do.
Okay.
So, that question is not relevant, first point.
I'm still trying to understand this, but, you know, as far as, let's say we, you identify a local charity, and somebody buys credits, or whatever terminology you use for them to play those machines?
Donation.
Donate, you say donate. If they choose to donate ten dollars to play that machine, following your formula, the five percent go into a true charity?
Yes, sir.
Or at least, we would hope that goes to a true charity, then out of those ten dollars that they pay, or donate to play, five percent of that ten dollars actually goes to what you stated as an intended purpose, the rest of that goes to you.
Expenses and overhead and everything else?
Yeah, but as a business, I, you're the business owner, manager, or proprietor?
I'm the owner.
Goes to overhead and so forth?
ORECs, rates, electricity, utilities, you know? I mean, they're not cheap, huh?
And, and if I may, I have a tax question.
Yes, sir.
So you're setting up this business as a five oh one C three, or a profitable corporation?
Yeah, I mean, I'm a part of the HEST in this, and I am also five oh one three C S.
Okay, so, so then whatever earnings, whatever profit, whatever vigourish there is, that comes to you tax-free?
No, whatever I, no, whatever I draw, I have to pay taxes on it.
Okay, so what part of you is a five oh one C three, tax, nonprofit?
Five percent I am donating.
Pardon?
Five percent of the total revenues.
Yeah, I don't think you understand the question.
And what part of you is tax-free? You, you yourself, not the charity?
Mine, I will pay regular taxes like any citizen.
Okay, so, so your company, your corporation, your, your LLC, your PC, your C S corp, whatever you are, you, you will make money, you have overhead, and there's profit. You're doing it to make a buck, and that's okay in life, that's what we need to do in life.
That's on the ancient deep, but whatever I draw personally, and I'll pay my own taxes, and the company will pay its own taxes.
Okay, and then you will spin out five percent to a charity?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I'd like to suggest we table this, and so, so that we could have an executive session. I, I think the city attorney has sufficient, the flavor of the questions and concerns of the commission, to get prepared for, to address some of these questions in executive session, and then, let's think of it as a meeting.
Mayor, I'd like to also ask that the city attorney come back with some additional information.
information as to what other cities, obviously there are some other sweepstakes throughout the state that are under the same state regulations that deal with the ECB.
Yeah, there's one, there's one I need to...
So I'd like to understand better of how other cities are governing this, through ordinance and their commands, so that we can try to accommodate a business, but also try to govern it so that it doesn't create an issue.
Mr. Ragerth, I understand that you're anxious to move forward, but, you know, being the first has its advantages and has its disadvantages as well, and this is an important decision for the community, so we're going to hopefully take this up at the next meeting. Is there a motion to table it?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to...
Is there a second? All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I just like to add one more point, Rick, you were talking about paperwork, state on like a, I need to make sure we can...
And I think technically, he wouldn't be the first, there's like twelve in the county already operating, so, twelve sweepstakes. And there's one on eighty-three anyways.
Is it first in March, or is it not in the city?
No, it's in the county, but it's on the eighty-three.
I'll have it in the city.
No, it's technically no. But there's twelve in the county.
Right. Item nine is to consider taking action to approve the employment agreement of the Department of Urban Development and Robelle Garza. CBO. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, my side. Congratulations, Mr. Garza, we're looking forward to having you onboard our economic law corporation. Item ten, consider taking action to approve an ordinance on first reading of pending chapter seventy-one, stopping, standing, standing and parking, a local ordinances of the city of Carlington, by adding section seventy-one point oh five to establish a residential parking permit for elderly and disabled persons, providing for definitions, eligibility requirements, quantity and type of permits, cost responsibility, procedures for no parking, essential permit sign installation and removal, establishing effective date by savings clause, providing severability clause, providing complication or any other matters.
This is a ordinance that basically came from senior citizens. And what it provides for is a handicap zone here in front of a household that has somebody inside that apartment who's disabled. And we're having a lot of problems with people parking in areas, ambulances can't get in there, fire trucks can't get in there because it's blocked, because some of the streets are so narrow. So, we came up with this ordinance based on the input from the senior citizen. And from what I understand, you know, we looked at a lot of different states and what they charge, okay? And we're actually following a cost for everything, as far as the signs and the tickets, which will be these, by the way. This color, okay? You hang them just like you do the handicap sticker. But we actually based them on what they have in Chicago. They're actually charged the less rate than everybody else. But that was, that's the thing, also, it also incur, you know, a little list of things in the ordinance, it's how you qualify for the signs and handicap permits, but ultimately it's going to be the doctors that are going to send their information. And that's really the gist of it, you know? Pretty simple ordinance, a couple pages. Want anything?
Yeah, can I? So my question's gonna be, I know there was two versions in the, in the stuff that we had, but you're going with the recommendation by staff is for the second version, the one that was handed out by Rick Gudel, that you just handed out, that actually was staff, I think the engineering department initially came up with the ordinance, the city attorney reviewed it, her comments are in your I-CAP, we sent it also to a written model, and they made a few modifications, and that's the version that Rick Gudel handed out. The ordinance itself, in its final format, has basically two components. One is to provide elderly parking, and advisory committee determined that they wanted that age cutoff to be seventy years of age. I know it seems high, but they felt that, since, a lot of them are familiar with elderly organizations, that they felt that that's the age where you probably need some sort of assistance as far as handicap parking in front of your home. The second component is for handicap parking, there's no age limitation there, as long as you're handicapped, determined to be handicapped by a doctor. And, Mayor, I don't know if you want me to go through the entire ordinance or just hit the highlights.
No, just hit the highlights, I think somebody's got an interesting question they could ask.
Okay. Basically, the first major component of obtaining this permit is, you have, as far as being physically handicapped, you have to have the state's handicap permit already. That's one of the primary components of this. The other is that you have to be declared by a doctor that the disability that you have is permanent. And there are several, several components in the ordinance list, what those handicap situations may be. And the other was the fee that the advisory committee actually had a lot of discussion about. Some cities don't charge anything, others charge as much as seventy-five dollars, they recommended sixty dollars for this fee. They wanted to keep it reasonable, that would allow the applicant to get the handicap parking zone from their house, and one, a handicap placard that they would place on their card, it would allow them to actually receive a second for fifteen dollars and buy up to four replacements throughout the line. Now, the one other component that was actually debated quite a bit was that this is only available if you own your own home. That was an issue, they didn't want renters to actually come up and receive the benefit because of the mobility portion of it, so this is limited only to homeowners.
And right, you know, if you lease a rent, it wouldn't make any sense, if you go somewhere else, I'm just saying.
I think overall, this is a good thing. I think it's something that in very narrowly scoped instances, I think it's a good thing that we need to be able to do something to help the residents. My only question is, I know there was two versions, one with the permanently affixed stickers that go on the windshield versus a hang tags, and I would, my recommendation would be that we think about having the ordinance approved, but with the permanently affixed tags that go on the windshield. For several things, number one, it would eliminate the possibility of the property owner, the one who owns those tags forgetting to put those on there. And the fact that it would also make it in a way where it goes to the one vehicle that's intended to be, I believe, there's both versions, whether it was a hang tag or the permanently affixed sticker, the intent is the same, for it to go on that one vehicle. By having it on the windshield, it protects the one who gets the permit from forgetting, they don't have to worry about it, they just put it once on the windshield and it's done. They don't have to worry about forgetting to put it on.
That's a good idea, but one of the reasons why we did it this way, because it's very visible, is you might have people that have these in there and go to the mall and park in a handicap spot, which that's not what this is all about, you know what I'm saying? Well, as far as, we can keep the same color and put a sticker on the window.
I think that would be good, I think that would protect both the permit holder and of course the PD or whoever enforces that, they know where to look for it. It saves staff time in the event somebody just happens to inadvertently forget to put it on the, on the rearview mirror, it just eliminates, I hope, maybe...
Then the other item is, with these hanging cards, if someone can get six of them, how quickly then does a black market develop and sell these fifteen dollar tickets for more than...
There would be, there would be only two that particular resident.
Right, you said they could buy four more.
Right. They'd have the address of the resident on the placard, so...
It's not in the, it's not in the interest of the resident to...
Pass them out.
Pass them out, good.
I'd like to...
I know, but to park elsewhere in the city, you know...
And I weigh in on this, because I think that one of the things that we need to consider is that if you have a homeowner who needs caregivers, you may have multiple caregivers, and a tag, a hanging tag, maybe better to have for multiple caregivers, because you may not have the same caregiver every day of the week, you may have an organization or a business that comes and offers some, and services that may need to rotate that tag.
Yeah, well, odds are the caregiver will not be disabled...
I appreciate the concern of this, with the sticker.
And will be able to walk to the house from wherever they depart.
Well, the thing is, sometimes caregivers may be delivering...
One is, one is, one is...
Yeah, I just, I'd just like to say, I think that that just needs to be considered, I mean, you may have a caregiver who is dropping off people, homeowners that are in need of medical need, or that qualify for handicap, or in the age group that require this, and they may not always have the same caregiver that's dropping them off and picking them up.
Why don't we defer to the senior citizens advisory board, who's hashed this out pretty much, and, you know, go ahead and pass on first reading, there may be something you want to talk about in the second reading if you want to adjust it, but we also could get some experience with it, and, yes, with...
I'd like to recognize the senior citizens advisory board, if you could please stand up the members that are here, because there's actually still quite a bit of discussion.
Mayor, Commissioners, Mayor Rosales, Chair of the advisory board, we did spend a lot of time reviewing all these questions that you are now asking, and we went through so much paperwork, and I'd like to thank Mr. Rosales, and of course, the department, your engineer in the department, and trying to figure out all the best ways of working this out. This is a very important issue that is very much needed for our seniors. And believe me, when we did that, we have spent months already working into it. We know that they're gonna have people probably dropping them there, we discussed that for hours, we were here for, Mr. Rosales can tell you many of the meetings. So I will say, we have done the best that we can, at least to provide something that is so much needed for our senior citizens, handicapped and elderly. So I really want to thank you, all of you, you could just at least do the best that you can to come to a conclusion and help us put this together and pass this ordinance.
Okay, so thinking of other corporations in town, they have the sticker in the windshield plus the hanging...
For, you say, yes.
The hanging, thinking of a jig. So, I guess there's three choices, one is the hanging thingamajig, the sticker, or both. What would you all recommend?
We recommended this sticker to go there and to place it, because, yes, the hanging, for the only reason that it's gonna be given on the, on the name of the person that lives there and the address of that, of that address. I don't care if you want to hang it in many other places, if you have it with you, it's not gonna be valid, a policeman will probably give them a parking ticket, I'm assuming, when they regulate all these restrictions, where they're gonna use it, but it's only for that one property, for that one property in the name of the person that is sick and needs that assistance. And as I'm saying, when we brought this up to our Commissioner, I'd like to thank him too, because he went with me and took pictures of a couple of these, it was a matter where the ambulance was there going around trying to look for a parking space to pick up this one elderly person that he could not get out of the house. Everybody was parking there, it's just for the homeowner.
Does add, does adding the address to the hanging, hang tag, so...
And ultimately, Mayor, that's a very small detail on it.
Yes, it's a very small...
That was just an observation and suggestion, the important thing that we do, I think the important thing...
Well, it just occurred to me that there are, I've seen, you know, hang tags that, you know, kind of many of, kind of many of them have, you know, owner's permit that have the actual unit number on it, so there's no trade or, you know, there's no universality of it, it's for that piece of property.
You're right, Mayor, that was also, that was part of the discussion, and the address will be part of that, if it's, if it's one of most of you, and that's a must, sure, we all discussed that, and it can be that, the address.
I would think that you would want that tagged and carried with the patient, you know, for the...
Not all of it, because he has a tag already, probably a permit for being disabled, to park in any other place.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying, for whatever caregiver that, even professional that comes to the child...
That's why he's been asked to buy one or two, because they do have a caregiver, so then they will be given one also, when they come in to bring him or to pick him up or whatever, they already place their card in there, make sure that they have that space for him.
It can changeable, they can get the...
Yeah, it's changeable, it can be given.
Okay, would it be appropriate to read the caption then at this time?
I might add, if I want to read the caption, that we are, there's a couple of minor things that we're trying to do, just at the end of the ordinance section, by the end, we're going to say it's effective immediately, but not enforceable until ten days after publication, because a fine is involved. And the only other thing Dave and I discussed was, you may want to just take a look at whether you want to admit nine under B, B nine, about...
I think we're gonna recommend that here, where we, obviously, have that parking, even if you have a narrow driveway.
Sorry.
B nine, that would be the only thing that you have to think about, that would, whether you want to... Okay, let me, I'll read the caption. On ordinance amending chapter seventy-one, stopping, standing, and parking of the code of ordinances of the city of Carlington by adding section seventy-one point oh five to establish a residential parking permit for elderly and disabled persons, providing for definitions, eligibility requirements, quantity and type of permits, cost responsibility, procedures for no parking except with permits assigned, installation and removal, establishing effective date, providing a savings clause, providing a severability clause, providing for publication or any other matter directly in the report. So, I have some with staff, park managers with staff recommendations.
That would include, that would include admitting to nine?
Including, admitting to nine.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, my side.
I do that by saying...
Again, congratulations, senior citizens.
Thank you, thank you very much for doing this, so important, okay, thank you so much.
And item eleven, update on the supplemental, text submission on environmental quality of chapter three nineteen, Clean Water Act, non-point source grants to reconstruct the city hall parking lot and demonstration project for low-impact development projects.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. We apply for a grant for TCQ for our low-impact development project next door. The grant is a forty-six seat tight grant with forty percent match from the city. Our projected estimate is about four hundred and sixty-nine thousand with the city's forty percent match of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. We have, we'll probably provide in-kind services, engineering services, project management as part of our contribution, and that would probably lower the actual monetary contribution to about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Question, why does the parking lot need to be redone? At this time?
We're looking at that, it needs to probably be redone already, because it's probably, I don't know how old it is, but we're gonna put permeable pavers, permeable concrete, and landscaping, and this will slow down flows into the Arroyo Polara and eventually Laguna Madre.
So where will the water go then? I mean, everything here eventually rolls into the Arroyo.
This project will sort of limit the pollutants into the Arroyo and Laguna Madre. It'll be sort of filtered, oil...
Explain filter system to me.
The filter system consists of a, the permeable paper, and you have a, either a two-foot, three-foot base, gravel base, and that, some of the pollutants will actually be caught.
And the pollutants will be oil drips?
Oil drips, gasoline, every six months, the actual permeable pavers will be cleaned, actually by a second motion to make them, if they get blocked or...
They need vacuumed?
The actual, no, to keep them permeable, they will be vacuumed, like release those particles, and this will also have a, like a little catch basin, that's where all the pollutants will be captured.
So do we already have the vacuum machine, the vacuum...
Yes, we do. The factor trips.
And so, like, the question is, is why is it critical at this time to spend this kind of money and not put it off for another month, every year, or two years, and why not just seal it coming again?
Take a look at the parking lot. We don't, we don't have, I mean, we don't have a grant yet, Commissioner, we're simply applying for the grant, we want to let the commission know that the...
We want to let the commission know that the potential cost to us could be about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars if we are awarded the grant.
Okay.
Now, we can say no at that point to the grant. If we decide we don't have the money, we can't find the money. Now, this is a demonstration project, it's part of a low-impact development project. Low-impact development helps filter and clean out stormwater before it enters the Arroyo, try to prevent pollutants from entering the Arroyo to a certain degree. This was being done through a partnership with Texas A&amp;M, University of Kingsville. We partnered with several vendors where they would, they would provide pavers and expertise, engineering, so forth, to do this project. We were hoping to get to a point where we didn't have to come up with any money. That may still be the case. We won't know that until we get the grant, and if if we do have some money that we have to pay out of our pockets, we may be able to also go back to the task force that we are a part of for low-impact development and seek funding from them to offset the difference. So we won't know what the dollar amount's going to be, but we want to notify the city council that it could be as high as a hundred and twenty, and at some point we'll have to make a decision whether we want to move forward or we want to say we know what will pass.
But the the grant process, the trust, that's your first.
That's correct, and we we went ahead and applied, because we got permission to apply, and but we wanted to let you guys know, we didn't want to hit you guys, that when we get the grant and say, hey, we need to come up with a hundred and twenty grand.
Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to make one of the things, we're, you're not just doing this just because you want to, right?
No.
Part of this, part of this Clean Water Act.
It's a requirement.
Is a requirement that the city mitigate runoff into the Arroyo, so we're doing this because we have to do it, not because we just want to go through it.
It's just part of stormwater, all stormwater development has.
The citywide stormwater.
Management program.
Mandated.
It's an unfunded mandate by EPA.
It's an unfunded mandate, and anytime we can get grant money to offset some of the costs involved, that's what we need to do.
And one way to do it is to use these permeable pavers, and that's what we try to incorporate a demonstration project, because we do need to redo the parking lot at City Hall. That parking lot's possibly twenty, thirty years old, it needs to be redone.
Anyway, this is just an update.
I'm just trying to save money, or not save.
And so are we, Commissioner, so are we.
Yeah, I think, I think if it were up to me, this, we, you know, we veto the stormwater plan, sort of what that.
If it were out in most cities.
I, I think that's a horrible, you know, that's, you know, we're being extremely burdened by this, you know, by this mandate to have to do this, but I think we've had the, and we've had the, you know, what are we up to now, seventy, eighty, hundred thousand dollars in our annual budget to 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 manage.
And 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 that budget won't need.
Full-time staff person just.
And that budget won't need to grow.
I think Commissioner Mesner's concerns are right on, we need to worry about taxpayer money, but the fact is, I think, Commissioner, that maybe you weren't aware because you're somewhat new on the mission, that that we've been mandated by the state to take some actions to make sure that our runoff doesn't exceed certain levels, and that they are going to be tightening up on what's allowed in the Arroyo, and there are some.
And there's an edge, there's an educational component to this also, Commissioner. There's going to be cash basin, as I pointed out, and the the university will be able to bring in engineering students to educate them on the proper way of putting one of these parking lots together to filter the water before it goes into the stormwater. There'll be monitoring areas where they can actually take samples, and there'll be a test done, or not test, I guess you'd call it inspections done over a period of time and reports done. And this is all being done again through a partnership with A&amp;M, because we knew we couldn't afford the whole thing ourselves.
In contrast to Commissioner Mesner's concerns, I think that staff is doing outstanding job, thinking outside the box and pursuing partnerships and granting money to offset what taxpayers would ultimately have to pay to mitigate some of the, some of the stormwater runoff.
But these are all good questions, good discussion, and so thank you for the, for the update on this item, and we'll wait to, we'll wait to find out about the grant. Next item, item twelve, consider to take action to amend ordinance ninety-eight dash fifty-eight to establish a school zone along Rio Grande Road between High Street and Morgan Avenue, FM five oh seven, Memorial Middle School.
The school district, of course, is building a new Memorial Middle School, and they've requested that we add a school zone area in front of the school and staff them curse with it.
Can we read the caption, please?
Ordinance amending the Harlingen ordinance ninety-eight dash fifty-eight to establish a school zone for Memorial Middle School located on nineteen oh one Rio Grande Road, establishing a penalty not to exceed two hundred dollars for violation of provision of this ordinance, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to foregone expenses.
All those that bear say aye.
Aye.
As opposed to my side, motion carries item thirteen, consider to take action to approve and adopt resolution of separate accounting and airport investment capital expenses, capital improvement budget fiscal year two thousand one hundred, two thousand twelve, spend twenty thousand dollars in the acquisition of ground service equipment. Mr. Browning?
Mayor Commissioners, Sun Country Airlines has been providing excellent service to Harlingen for more than fifteen years. Last year, they transported over fifty thousand people between Minneapolis and Harlingen. Southwest is a very important partner to our airport and an important service they provide to the airport.
Sun Country.
Sun Country, I'm sorry, I say Southwest, sorry.
That too.
That too, that too.
We love all the airline.
They all love it. For the past several years, Sun Country has contracted with Express Jet to handle them while they're on the ground in Harlingen, and this includes ticketing passengers, providing boarding passes, putting bags on the airplane, taking them off, and so on. As a side note, Express Jet also handles United Express at at the airport. Sun Country has informed the airport that they have not been able to reach an agreement with Express Jet to have these services provided for them, and so they've been exploring alternatives to Express Jet, and they approached the airport and asked that we entertain the idea of providing this service as a service at the airport to Sun Country Airlines. It wouldn't necessarily be unique, this happens at other airports around the country where the airports actually provide ground handling service for airlines such as Mullina, Illinois, Springfield, Missouri, and Bangor, Maine. Staff looked at what would be involved with such an operation, and after several discussions with Sun Country, staff has recommended to the airport board that we go ahead and proceed with developing the service to provide Sun Country Airlines effective October first. Sun Country has offered to install and provide all of the computer equipment, including the printers, the servers and so forth, at the counter, and while the airport would provide the labor and the, also the equipment on the airside to handle the baggage, loading and unloading, and all the things that go along with that. Sun Country has also offered to provide complete training to the airport employees that would be providing the service, including a week-long training period on their computer system at the counter as well as out at the aircraft itself. During a special meeting of the airport board on August third, the capital budget was amended to include twenty thousand dollars for ground service equipment, and that represents about a third of what we're going to ultimately need, but that's all we're requesting at this time. Next fiscal year's budget, we'll have additional monies to acquire some additional equipment, and I'll be glad to answer any questions if you want to have.
Mayor, I just like, I think of us, and if we take action to approve and adopt resolution of separate accounting, then capital expenses.
Second.
Okay, that's very good discussion. We have questions.
Yes, sir.
Is this, are we all part of a giant poker game? Is this a way to force Express to to tone you back down and say, yeah, we'll do it for X instead of plus one?
I don't see that happening. They've signed a letter of intent with us. It's certainly a non-binding letter, but I, I, Sun Country's been very good to us in the past, we've worked well together.
No, like, I think the other information of, of Commissioner, I was that Express Jet went out for bid with a number of other airports, and you, you explain that.
Express Jet, United Express had contracted with Express Jet at fifteen airports. That that contract was up in June, and so they put it out for bid. That Express Jet lost fourteen of those fifteen airports to other companies, and Harlingen was the only city that retained Express Jet.
So do we have a.
Or for United.
For United.
Service for United, the point is, is that they're not, you know, other airports are looking for other certain, other providers, and Sun Country's not, not alone here.
That's correct.
Mayor, were we hiring additional staff to accommodate this?
Initially, we looked at utilizing current airport employees to get the ball rolling, but since our last meeting with the airport board, Sun Country's informed us that they're adding frequencies, so we're to a point now where existing employees aren't going to be able to handle their regular job in addition to the Sun Country.
And that includes you?
I'm sorry?
Does that include you, the baggage handler?
That includes me, I think they've designated me as the last card person. But, so we'll be looking at hiring part-time personnel.
And Leo, do you have like a specific business model, customer service model that has to be trained in?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other discussion? All those that bear say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Out of fourteen conservative action to authorize the Bay Area Skater to Hello Agreement, ACISD to sign two full-time uniform from police officers to high schools, and this has high school resource officers during the two thousand thirteen school county, ACISD may allow to hire additional police officers on our retirement leave allowance. Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Commissioners. This item before you is, just to do exactly that, has the commission allow the mayor to enter into an interlocutory agreement with the Harlingen Consolidated Independent School District regarding the assignment of two-piece officers to act as SROs or school resource officers. It's actually just an extension of last year's agreement, both parties, us, the city and the school district are very pleased with the way it worked last time, and neither of us found a reason to make any changes this time.
Is it about to authorize the interlocutory agreement?
Mayor, could you make the motion subject to a correction? Three point oh one of the agreement has an error in it that we would need to get corrected, just more or less of a typographical, certain language is missing, we just need to get it back in the agreement.
Okay. Nine question.
Yes, sir.
That we paying us thirty-seven dollars now?
Yes.
Does that cover the cost of the placement, or are we subsidizing this?
No, that actually covers the cost. The way the agreement works, you know, they can hire additional officers at that off-duty rate, and they've chosen to take advantage of that, and yes, they make thirty-seven dollars, which is their average overtime rate.
Okay, so we're not going to lose it done?
No, sir, no, sir.
Okay, there was a motion with the, you consent to the amendment that suggested by the city attorney.
Yes, second.
On, any other discussion?
Yeah, I have, I have some questions. Last, last couple of years, we've looked at this, and I know we talked about it last year, and I asked you to go back and evaluate the the school policing, because evidently we've been using only, or they've been utilizing only two resource officers for many years, but yet our student body base has grown, and actually, my concern last year when we got to this point was because of an officer, one of the resource officers at South was overwhelmed by a mob and injured some injury and was was unable to to protect himself because he was outnumbered, and that kind of do some conserving, not only for the officers, but for the students that go to the schools, and I'm still, still looking for that validation that we're looking at what the school district is doing, because it seems like two resource officers for the last ten or fifteen or twenty years, you know, it just may not be enough for the expansion of our student body and the number of new campuses that we're taking on.
Right, well, actually, when I said they take full advantage of that, there's actually four, there are two full-time officers that we give, but they hire the off-duty guys consistently throughout the whole year.
And that was, that was going to be my next question.
Yes, sir.
Because I'd like to, I'd like to see the trend of utilization of those additional two officers that the school district uses based on a history of activity that, because, you know, I hear this background noise that, well, it's kind of a closed thing, and you don't really hear, or not everything's reported that happens at some of the high schools, sometimes at the junior highs, and that, that kind of bothers me too, because I've got, I've got two, two of my children attend South, and, and, you know, I'm concerned when I hear that a police officer has taken over and he has to call for backup that's not available on campus, and that the, that the security people that are at the schools, you know, they, they're not allowed to do certain policing things in terms of arrest or carry weapons, or I'm not sure what it is, but I know that they're not, they're not at the level of police protection.
Right, right, no, I agree, I mean, we actually, you know, for example, at South has less calls, they have about sixty-eight, and Harlingen North, that the SROs handle have about eighty-six total, you know, within all the schools, there's like four hundred and something calls, but many of those are just traffic complaints. Like I said, we're both happy with the agreement, we don't think any of them are overwhelmed, and they, they do take advantage of the off-duty, the part-time SROs. As a matter of fact, we all, including the school district, just had a meeting about how we were going to schedule all of them and what we do is allow people that are interested in performing that duty to let us know, we took all roster, we already scheduled them for the year, so, again, I mean, they actually, each of those high schools has, have two SROs, and we're trying to utilize the part-time ones, they're actually involved in a partnership, I guess, to address kind of, and, and, you know, certainly, not that there's a big issue, but I mean, we're going into the middle schools for issues of bullying and stuff, and partnering with the schools on their curriculum, you know, because one kid being bullied is one too many, so.
Yeah, and I guess a couple of things, then, that you kind of trigger some thought on this, you've instituted a lot of new programs in the city and the police department, you've restructured, is there, is there some things that that you could bathe to the school districts so to help them and maybe some new programs that you've brought in that we weren't utilizing before?
Well, actually, I mean, we are doing more, and for example, as, as Commissioner Purvis Shaw mentioned last week, we have every officer in every district, and there's a team approach, and they're responsible for those schools in their district, so when we monitor the trends and patterns, certainly the schools are, are, they stand alone.
There's more awareness.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and like I said, we're coordinating on that particular curriculum. The school, we actually met with, at the administrative offices, we're going to come up with a, a district-wide version of the DARE program. We haven't implemented yet, but we mentioned it, we brought it forward, and they're on board with it.
Okay, and I guess the next question or the next concern or thought would be about the night grid campus that's going to come online after this school year that's coming up. How, how, is your, what is your approach going to be to make sure that the resources, because obviously you're going to have that kind of adult attitude at that night grid campus, do you have a lot of them there?
Right, well, I mean, you know, I know that in different, in different areas, they've done it, they've had standalone campuses, they put them back in the middle school, or they put them back in the high school. Like I said, you know, this, the whole philosophy that we do is to monitor the trends and patterns before they happen and get in front of the crime, and, and by monitoring the calls that are school-specific, we're doing that. You know, if if we need more, we'll certainly do it, and again, the school works with us as far as, like I said, you know, the, the agreement allows them to hire more routinely, it's two, but on some occasions, they go one.
One of the things that's always bothered me is when we bring up policing in the school district, and some school districts have their own police.
Right, right.
And the school district is kind of pushed away from having their own police force, they say they're not in the policing business, and that's why I'm looking for you as the top law enforcement professional in the community to make sure that you're evaluating what they provide in terms of safety for our children and our police officers who man those, the schools in the, in the capacity of resource officers, to make sure that they're not, they're not in, in danger, and our, and our, our children are not in danger.
Right, right, no, certainly.
And I know that's, that's not necessarily fair, because it's kind of gets pushed back from the school district on you, and I know that they try to, they try their best with their program without instituting a comprehensive school district police department, but I just, I'd just like to ask that you continue to keep an emphasis on the school district to make sure that they're not compromising the public safety of our children through their policies, their internal policies, and that you take proactive, and I just ask that you bring up any concerns to the commission so we can convey those to the school district.
Yes, sir.
Curiosity, are any of these officers armed with a baton or anything greater?
Yes, sir, they have, they all have all their.
Fooling?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I think another thing plus is, not only do you have the police officers in the school, but you have police officers assigned to districts that control that area, so, you know, if there is an extra help, it's probably close by.
Well, and I acknowledge that, and I just, but obviously, when you're on campus, you're in a better backup role when you have. Well, and, and I acknowledge that and I just, but obviously when you're on campus, you're in a better backup role when you have multiple police officers who are performed instead of having security guards to support a resource officer who may be in trouble. We've already experienced that, I mean, it just happened. I don't know if it's the last school year, but earlier year before, we had, we had an incident.
Right.
And that's what I'm worried about because we're expanding, our school, the student body is expanding, we've got a ninth grade campus coming on.
Right.
That's going to be leading, that's going to lead into a third high school type environment and we need to look at more than two permanent resource officers with backup to, you know, overtime officers there.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Well, I think the chief is committed to, to back, continuing to evaluate that, bring that to our attention and it may be that we have to, as we, and, and the campus will have to do something different or have them, and have them pay for more, more service. But, and, and you may, I mean, you're the professional and this would be, you know, you're within the, your evaluation, but, you know, as a layperson, it seems to me that, you know, we're better off having some kind of this integrated, you know, that, that's better than any separate police forces within the community are not as well integrated with the rest of the police department. Therefore, it's really better to have our folks in, in the, in the high schools.
Right, well, you know, I mean, there's certainly, schools have thought, thought on both sides of that argument and the community policing perspective is, you know, you want to have the city police in there to form those partnerships with those kids at all time. But I can tell you from, coming from a place that had, we actually had five school districts and one of them was very large and they had a police department and regardless of if it was a code blue or an armed kid in there, it was really always the city police that were leading the way. But certainly we liked having them with us, like, like Commissioner Roswell mentioned, I think, like we've mentioned, yes, sir.
And I, and I agree with the mayor, you're, you're the top law enforcement official in the city of Harlingen, the school district is often not having their own police force. And we've gone with, to me, too long with the, with the number of resource officers that we're, that we're approving, being asked to approve this year. And I'm just asking you as a new set of eyes from Harlingen relatively new, to use your experience and let us know if we need to alert the school district.
Certainly will.
If we need better security.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other discussion? We have a motion to second, all those sheriffs say aye.
Aye.
Disposed, like, sign, motion carries. Item fifteen, consider taking action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading, authorizing the establishment of three additional sergeant positions to our police department's followers. A recommending three additional police sergeant positions and B recommending a decrease of three patrol officers positions, chief.
Yes, sir. You know, the ordinance is required by law and the ordinance specifically allocates position classifications. Our police department's authorized a hundred and thirty-four peace officers. By the time we're done with this amendment, we will still have a hundred and thirty-four peace officers. What we're asking to do is to change our allotment of twelve sergeants to fifteen, making our allotment of police officers from one twelve to one oh nine. There's many, many reasons for this, I think it's a win-win amendment. I'll certainly answer any questions. The most important reason to me is to bring us in line with industry-wide accepted practices in law enforcement regarding first-line supervisors and control. The accepted number is between six and nine and right now our supervisors are pretty much overseeing about twelve.
Let me ask you a question, by increasing?
I'm sorry?
By increasing?
Yes, sir.
Three sergeants?
Yes, sir.
That's not going to do anything to the patrols that are out there in the streets?
No, sir, and, and there's a lot, a couple of reasons for that. One, we put so many people in patrol, sometimes we don't have cars, but besides that, right now the way it works, you know, the police department's over twenty-four seven and, and in that front office, there's an officer and none of them want to be there. By doing this, you're going to allow me to have two supervise work, two supervisors working at all time and one of them will be in that front office. And like I said, there's a lot of reasons for that, for example, going through this Kalia assessment, you know, one of the requirements is that all prisoners are be taken, taken before a supervisor. Well, certainly we do that now, but we have to call them in from the field. You know, another requirement is that anybody can come in and make a complaint, well, they need a supervisor and again, we have to call a supervisor in and that's just not customer friendly for customer service. This will allow, there's, there's requirements that you inspect the jail cells daily, that you allow an arrestee to make an outcry if they feel the need to. And this will allow us to have a sergeant in there, the union loves the idea because it allows those officers to be out in the field. So really, like I said, it's just a win-win.
And so moving people up rank, how much is that going to cost?
Well, actually, these, by the civil service list that's already out there, the individuals that took the exam and I guess this works in our favor for our seasoned veteran policeman, the total amount for those three individuals is about twenty-six thousand dollars.
Per year?
Yes, sir, and then it was already.
All three?
All three, total, yes.
I think it's going to be a good thing for you to do this. The, the increase is only that amount and I think it's a good move. I think it's strategically the right thing to do and hats off to the chief for bringing that up, I think it's a good move.
And we've already questioned.
Minimal cost, yes.
We've already questioned this.
And is it going to hurt patrol?
No, sir, no, sir, like I said, right now, I mean, right now there's three, those three officers are sitting in that office twenty-four seven, now they're, now they're out there.
Okay, can we read the captions?
An ordinance that the city commissioner, the city of Harlingen, Texas, also threatens in the establishment of new position classification titles in relation to previous position classification titles within the Harlingen Police Department's organizational structure as afforded by Texas law and government code section one forty, one forty-three point oh two one A, providing an effective date and ordaining all other matters related.
For going. Seven move, second. Any discussion? All those sheriffs say aye.
Aye.
Disposed, like, sign, motion carries, all right, thank, thank, item sixteen.
Mayor, can I just point out, only for clarification for the record, on item fourteen, or yeah, fourteen, I had Commissioner Purvis Shaw making the motion, but I have a second, I think that second is.
Robert second?
Yes, Robert.
I didn't know it made the motion for that to second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Item sixteen, consider taking action to approve and adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor's seat grant funding the amount of forty thousand dollars to the Texas Department of Public Safety. Texas Ranger Division, City Parlement, Police Department for allocation of additional law enforcement staffing and an overtime base to turn crime and patrol security within the city parlement.
Yes, sir, the, this is grant money from the Texas Department of Public Safety, they're ready to award it for us. The, the requirements of the grant are very, are very generous, we can kind of use it for whatever we need to. As you know, we're targeting trends and patterns and, you know, frankly, there's, there's more trends and patterns than we can attack. So this money is, we're going to use to target some of those on an off-duty basis.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, then we take action to approve and adopt a resolution.
Second.
Any discussion, all those sheriffs say aye.
Aye.
Disposed, like, sign, motion carries, all right, thank you.
Chief.
Item seventeen, board appointments, are there any board appointments?
I have, I have one, Michael Garland to the board.
Third difference, see, were you appointed already?
Are you, you're appointed, the planning is already resigned after this was.
Okay, congratulations. All right, item, okay, is.
I'm making a motion, any, adopt, motion to approve, is that board?
Second.
Second.
All those sheriffs say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
By the way, Mike, you need to write a rule reservation, give it to a man, this should make you out the planning.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Item eighteen, citizen, any concerns?
Yes, Mayor, I have Mrs. Dale Moore and Jerry Moore and they'd like to speak on smart meters.
Good evening, gentlemen, thank you for hearing me tonight. Since October twenty-eleven, many people have suffered numerous health problems to which doctors are clueless about concerning origins. Symptoms, however, are the same. I am and have been speaking about the smart meters and the installation upon them, upon the sides of buildings, homes, apartment complexes and nursing homes. Even though many of us have written letters and voiced our concerns about EMFs, electromagnetic fields, radio waves and microwaves pulsing through the air right into our homes, into our bodies, into our grandchildren's bodies, animals, pets, plants and food sources. Because these have radio waves and microwave pulses in excess of six gigahertz. People with pacemakers and insulin pumps will be gravely affected immediately. Anyone with an immune disorder, be it allergies, asthma, lupus, arthritis, are ill now. Infants and children will suffer with leukemia and lymphoma much more regularly than before. If infants and children grow to childbearing ages, most will be sterile since microwave and radio wave effects are cumulative, meaning accumulating in soft tissues, particularly in the thyroid gland and sex organs. EMFs are emitted by cell phones, smart meters, iPods and computers, in reality, all radios and TVs as well. The point that I make tonight is the uneducated public and uneducated commissioners and firefighters and police officers who are affected unknowingly, adversely and with hazardous proportions. These EMFs-related microwave and radio waves have supersaturated and polluted our airwaves. I strongly urge all of you to open your eyes and ears to this horrendous phenomenon. I am not a save our planet freak. However, many citizens all across the U.S. are informed and fighting this deadly technology which has pushed us over and beyond our limits since October twenty-eleven, when the cellphone tower near Windstar Apartments was embellished. And many more are and have been installed every two miles. I foresee mass class action lawsuits, gentlemen, many deaths of our own children and grandchildren unless these cellphone smart meter towers be quickly torn down and the smart meters removed and replaced with analog meters. I have much information I would be glad to share with you. I plan to visit Austin, Texas, August the twenty-first for the PUC hearing to speak against smart meters on electric and water meters and against embellished cellphone towers. Thank you. Also for the record, Seventh Street, please, desperately needs to be repaved from seventy-seven Sunshine Strip to Loop four ninety-nine covering six schools and churches and many residences. Thank you.
Jerry Moore, seven oh nine, town lane, commissioners, thank you for hearing us tonight. Yeah, I just wanted to add what my wife's concerns are as well as my own personal family's experience. My older brother was involved in development of the cell phones thirty years ago with Motorola and we discussed many years ago the serious concerns that they had at that time with the microwave. And it has only increased over time and if you know anything about your radio frequencies increasing from VHF all the way up through microwave, that's what we're dealing with, with your 4G sitting in your lap. It's easily readable with the sensitive test equipment and they play games with the way that they test it, okay? That's, they'll, the time wait in average, just like your hearing test or any other test. And they, they spoof and they fool doctors, they fool people all the time. And if you know, they brought a UAV down over in Iran. The technology out there is just beyond anything we can comprehend. However, I think you, as, as our leaders, need to step up and do due diligence in investigating and bringing this forward to the citizens of Harlingen so that they're fully aware of the consequences of what this stuff is going to do to our kids and to us as we age. And it is there, it's for real. Pilots that I deal with daily inform me of their, our retirement friends who developed testicular cancer or, different kinds of cancer, they don't last two years beyond their retirement, many of them. It's not a phenomenon, my own brother developed multiple myeloma, dealing with this stuff. Please, take it serious, thank you.
Is there any other citizens? All right, ladies and gentlemen, our meeting is adjourned, thank you.